I'm Greg Johnson, we call the meeting over. This is Thursday August 4th at 11:00. If you would please stand and join me in the prayer allegiance in your name standing for the invitation.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with every injustice for all.
President, Father, we ask that we may pray to God that he will give us the mercy of his own life. Father, we ask that he bless those who are in the fortunate and poor and continue to guard and order our steps, that we may be able to do the best we can to help this great city. Father, let all my colleagues, let us be honorable and respectful of one another in our position and love each other. We ask that he bless those who are under the terrible force, those who are in doubt, that he continues to give us travel verses two and one. And Father, we ask that he continues to bless our local communities, have this fair way of discussion, they are, for their propensity. We ask that he continues to lead them to God, for he will offer protection around them. Father, we end your heart this week. We ask that he gives all we do and say, complete and respectful to our bodies, we hope that this is what we ask.
I'd like to welcome our guests to business tonight and we begin with Dan Varden and Greg Johnson with One America, who will make a presentation regarding pension.
Mr. Varden? Yes. I'd just like to say this is a follow-up to a meeting we had a couple of weeks ago and I know that council wasn't able to attend, but I think it had some excellent points and I asked them to come back so that they can go over and give us an overview of what's going on, so I just want to thank both of them for coming back and goodness.
Thank you for having us. Greg, is there anything else on review papers, please? Just to bring you up to speed, we were asked about two, three weeks ago at the place of the mayor in town to take a look from a consultant point of view at your current pension plan. It was my ideas only to generate and stimulate conversation, not to tell you what you should do or shouldn't do, but especially in light of today and everything that's going on around the world and stuff from a county's point of view, it was just good timing to take a look and review. Also, this year your pension fee to fees that you paid from your city treasury to fund your pension was higher than anticipated for you and so he asked us to look at that too and just come up with a few ideas. Again, my name is Don Varden, I'm a classically trained economist, I subdue Freud and I specialize in pensions and any type of retirement plan, whether it be a 401(k) type thing, 457, through municipal or through private operations. This is Greg Johnson, Greg is one of the probably 5,000 actuaries in the world of his level, so he's a math guy, he takes all the numbers and converts them. But the unique thing about Greg is he's a consulting actuary, which means we let him talk to people, so Greg will be here to help interpret some of the numbers. We did take a good look at it, but we also thought it was more important, this is a very complex environment, but it is not complicated, but sometimes we use a lot of words and we throw along a number out that people don't understand, so we thought we'd spend a few minutes and just go over the basics of what a pension plan is, because people get so used to it and they get so involved in it, they forget about how it really works and the mechanisms of it, so if you don't mind, we've been asked to go through this really quickly. If you flip over to, I believe... That's what a lot of people were saying today, by the way. Okay, the question is how does a defined benefit plan work? Basically, a pension plan is something that's a promise that you make. The city had made a promise to its employees that in the future it's going to pay them a certain amount of money, it's called a pension, and the pension is based generally on a percentage of your pay. That promise is based on a number that's multiplied over the number of years an employee works. So, the multiplier, for example, for the city of Canton is 2.5, that's your number. So, you take the amount of time, amount of years an employee works, you multiply that by 2.5 and that's the percentage of their income they're guaranteed for the rest of their life. So, in this example, an employee worked for 20 years, you multiply that by 2.5 and they basically get 50% of their pay for the rest of their life. The rules and regulations around this are due to the city must keep enough money on hand to guarantee that these promises will be fulfilled and the money is invested in the fund and we're in a pool of money and it's invested with a reasonable amount of risk that's, I guess, appropriate for where you are in the world. Currently, right now, the city is doing business with a GMA and they're pooled with several other cities, so you're not really in control as far as investments go, you're put into a pool with several other cities, some of them your size, some of them not. Okay? Next page, there we go. Regulations say you must hire an actuary, that's the guy with Greg, to interpret the numbers and always make sure that you have enough money on hand to be able to fulfill these promises that you've made. An actuary once a year will create what's called a valuation report. We gave you a copy of your current one. Again, we don't represent you as a city, we're just taking a look at what you've currently got. The people who did this were very, very good, just so you know, so you've got very, very good actuaries right now doing the work and they produce that valuation report. When the actuary goes through the valuation report, they consider several things to compute how much you need to put into it this year, because as your population ages, as people grow in their tenure, you've got to make that pool of money that you're saving for them bigger, so you always have to be aware of how much money is needed and how much is out there around. The actuary evaluation report tells you every year what you need to put into it to make sure that you're keeping up with these regulations. To do so, the actuary looks at your current benefit design, how that money is invested and what the gains and losses are, but most importantly, they look at your population and the demographics, they look at age, gender, they look at your turnover rate, they look at your tenure, and then most biggest factor within all that too is they also look at people's salaries. So, all that goes into the mathematical soup and they come out to tell you exactly what you need to put in and to fund it. Now, obviously, we're going through some serious economic turmoil right now, if you go back 10 years, a lot of evaluations report came back at zero, said you didn't have to put it in there. Prior to the credit crisis in 2008, when the stock market was growing at, I believe, one of the Federal Reserve gentlemen referred to it as exuberant growth, when it was growing at rapid rates, you didn't have to put a lot of money into it because the stock market was growing at a rate big enough to cover for your costs. Well, right now, that's not happening, so what happens is the valuation report tells you how much you have to fund it. So, the question really is on the next page, is where are you right now? So, we wanted to take that 36-page actuary report and make it readable for you, in other words, interpret the stuff that actuaries do for you. Right now, the active number of employees is 105, 48 of those are not employed yet, but they weren't long enough for you to make promises to them, so they're owed some type of pension in the future. And the number of folks that are retired here, who are beneficiaries, are currently collecting is around 44. So, the current liability right now of what is owed, in other words, what the mathematicians come back and say that is needed to cover this cost is $7 million. The market value of the money that you have saved and invested at the time that they granted the report was little over $5 million, the difference in that is $2 million. Now, that's not necessarily a terrible thing, very, very few pension funds out there are fully funded, they're always running at a rate somewhat less than that because next year, things might change, the stock market might go up, your employee turnover might happen, other things might come into variables, so the regulations don't require that you be fully funded, but those require you to be within a certain range. So, the difference is about $2 million. The bill that you just got from your current actuaries telling you what you need to fund this year is $736,987. Now, that's broken into two pieces, of those two pieces, that $396,000 is going to fund what you've already got, that's the benefits there, that's that 2.5% multiplier, and the $340,000 is paying for things that are underfunded, that future benefit that's out there, those two total up to that $736,000. And what was unique, one thing that we saw that really jumped out at us, is your total payroll for the city is around $4.4 million. The amount that you have to put in for the pension is about 16% of that, okay, so 16% of your payroll goes for your pension. So, the obvious question to ask is, how does that look? Well, we were able to go out to the Bureau of Labor and Statistics and they gave us that number. They gave us the civilian workforce, private industry, and then state and local government, so if you're on the far right-hand side. So, what this report says is that for every dollar employee, or every dollar you spend for an employee, 65.5% or 65 cents of that goes for their actual wage and salary, then the rest of it, the 34% that's left, goes for their benefits. And you can read now, you can see what that is, payroll, the absence insurance, health insurance. What's unique though, is when you get down to retirement savings, retirement savings right now takes up about 8.2% of the overall cost and 7.4% of it being towards defined benefit plans like you have now in a pension plan. So, when the Bureau of Labor Statistics says that the number on average is around 7.4 and yours is 16%, we noticed that, we thought that that was something that just stuck out at us to look at. Now, keep in mind, you were in what's called a pool, with the GMA, you're pooled in with a lot of other cities around. That pool helps you spread some of that risk out, but it also helps you and rewards you when things are good. So, that means that risk is spread out a little bit more, in different sized cities, you're going to feel different sized pieces of that burden, that 16% might be as a result of that. You might be feeling a different part of that pool or a larger part of that pool has caused your costs to go up, but in full disclosure, that could happen in reverse in really, really good times, where you end up getting a better percentage and being a less of a burden. So, right now, you're probably experiencing that through the pool. Also, with a pooled event like that, you're not in control right now of your investments, you're letting GMA do it for you, they're good, they're qualified to do that, but it's not specific to you and to your risk, what you have. So, the actuary report that comes is based on what everyone has to put into the pool and then they break it down into your segment. It's not specific about you and the money that's invested by them is invested for everyone in the pool, it's not specific for you. So, if you ran a study and you realized that you could take on a little bit more risk, it doesn't mean anything. You're in that pool, you're in there with everyone else. So, the question that came up was what decisions do you need to make right now, or what process did you go through or stimulate conversations? And that's what we gave you a few ideas on here. You've got to make a couple of decisions, really. Number one, should you pay, you should pay your current fee, okay, that $736,000 is owed right now, or you can make plan adjustments and could lower your costs up to $400,000. Now, some of those are dramatic, we're not suggesting anything, but we want to show you a full statement on small changes up to large changes. And these changes, I know, means that you have to take away benefits, I mean, you certainly could, but I don't think anybody would want that or think about that, but you can make small changes, small tweaks here or there, will give you relief, actuarial relief, from having to spend as much money, you know, as you're doing now. You don't exactly have that luxury right now because you're tied up with the GMA, you're tied up inside of the pool, tied with everyone else. So, that leads down to the second decision you need to make, is whether or not you stay in the GMA pool or you go out and have your own. You are allowed to go and say, look, we want all our money out and we're just going to do it on our own, we're going to hire an investment person, and again, we're here because Judy Ross has asked us to come speak, because we're an investment person to take care of that, but that will be specific for you and your needs. You also can hire your own actuary and administrator to write the checks and to keep up with it for you. But again, the key to that is it will be specific for the city of Canton, it wouldn't be pooled in with anyone else. So, those are the really three decisions, pay the bill in pool or make any adjustments that might could save you money. And the second decision is whether to stay inside the pool or to move outside of it, either one is separate from each other. So, the question is, on the next page, what type of adjustments are available for us? If we wanted to make some adjustments and make an impact, what could we do? There's two types of adjustments you can make, benefit adjustments, where you go in and you change the benefit, and again, it doesn't mean capacity, we already made promises we have to keep those, but for future folks, how can we make some changes in these benefits? Both good and not so good. And also, you can make investment adjustments, by taking control of your investments, you might have your investment advisors create a more aggressive portfolio or a more conservative portfolio, so it meets your particular needs. As far as benefit adjustments go, Greg has done over 100 of these defined plans, I've done hundreds of them as well in European Union, in the United States, literally around the world, everything works out the same. One of the trends that we're seeing out there, and it's the least dramatic thing that you could do, this is an idea, is new employees, people who are not employed here today, someone you might hire tomorrow, is not offered them the benefits. That's very much the trend that we're seeing out there. So, most cities are saying, look, we're going to continue to keep promises we made, we're going to do everything for our employees here, but for a new employee that's coming in tomorrow, we're not going to offer that. Now, that's not as big of an immediate savings for you, but it stops, it stops the growth. So, over the next five, 10 years, you'll start seeing the savings off that. Just so you know, one of the reasons why that that's very little impact and it's not, it's not thought much about, I guess, for the new employees, is new employees now realize that they're going to have 10, 10 three-year jobs in their career. So, anyone coming out of school right now and they're starting their career knows that they're going to have 10 different career changes averaging at least three years each. So, they're not looking, they're not trained to think about being somewhere at 15, 20, 25 years. Now, the only minor exception to that would be a governmental entity or it could be a utility type, you know, company. Those are the only two that are hanging on where people might come here and think it's a long-term career option, but most people out there are looking at careers in three-year segments, knowing that they're going to have probably 10, three-year careers. So, that's why taking it away from future employees, again, these are folks that aren't even employed today, you don't even know who they are, taking away from them is going to help a little bit. The other thing that you can do that's popular, and we're seeing lots of cities do this, and counties and various types of it, is make adjustments to their multiplier. Right now, you're at 2.5, some are saying, well, look, in the future, we're going to change that, we might reduce it by half a point, just make it two, or I might make it one and a half. We did some actuarial assumptions on this, and every time you lower it by half a point, so if you change it from 2.5 where it is now down to 2.5, again, this is for future benefits, not what people have earned up until now, the savings of that is around $80,000 per half a point per year. So, that would immediately cut $80,000 off of your costs if you're going into the future, you are cutting benefits though for futures. The third, which we've seen in the paper a few times, is the most dramatic, we're certainly not recommending this, it's more of a...
Information.
Information only, it's more, it's a very dramatic thing, it's a freezers benefit plan, so there's no future increases whatsoever, and some of those are, there's a city just outside of Mobile that literally just can't pay it anymore, they've, you know, we're done. You're obviously nowhere near that situation, but you can take it down that far. In savings of this, any one of these options can lead from most dramatic to least, will save you up to $400,000 per year for small tweaks in the benefits, and that's without even tweaking the investments and how that's made. So, decision two is if you leave, do it. Obviously, we're here at your pleasure, Judy Ross, who unfortunately, she sends her apologies, is on vacation, she had been here, been involved in helicopter getting off the cruise ship and lost the money being funded with her family ship, she wasn't able to do that, but, you know, she would be able to help you through it, so would we, and so would Greg or anyone else that was out there that's capable of doing that, okay? One thing to keep in mind is when people make changes, is to look at options out there that are good and best for their employees. The city of Miami made terrible mistakes recently in their communication of their pension plan, they actually did exactly what they were supposed to do, they made the decisions that were appropriate for the situation that they're in, but they just did a terrible job explaining it. And in that explanation on it, they caused the chaos that you saw on the news at night, and it was so not necessary, you know, we were just shaking our heads watching that thing and this was just terrible. A good example of it was Fulton County, it's one of the things, you know, we've got one here to talk about, some things you can do to step success. 10, maybe 11 years ago, Fulton County was very far ahead of curve and they were allowed if they needed to make some changes. They didn't want to take away their benefits, what they wanted to do was create something that they could budget around. So, what they did was they created what's called a 401A plan, okay? Now, just so you know what that is, in the private sector, that's called a profit sharing plan, for your government, you're not allowed to have profits, but it essentially works the same way, where they say, look, from every employee that's here, we're going to give you a certain amount of money, you know, every year into your pension plan, and that find that amount, whether it be 5%, 6%, 4%, whatever, it's yours, and we're going to let you invest that however you want to. So, they guarantee their employees are going to have a certain amount that's given to them. And then, they have what's called a 457 plan. Now, 457 is the governmental version of a 401k, so where people can put money into it. What they did was they went out and said, look, if you save your own money, lots of 401k, then we're also going to contribute money to that as well, a match, but we're also going to do this 401A as well. What happened was, the way they did it, was they were able to come and say, look, we'll match you dollar for dollar for everything you save, and I think their formula was around 8% or 9% that they give people of their payroll just as they give. And then, they went and offered people by saying, look, you can keep your defined benefit, you can keep your pension, we have no problem with that, but we're not going to let new employees in. And two, once a year, if you want to opt out of it, you can. So, they let people say, look, how much if I want out of my pension plan, is it worth today? And then, a number is created, say it's $50,000. People are saying, I'll take that $50,000, roll that into my 401A that I control, and I'll start taking your contribution that you're giving, that 401A contribution to do it. So, what happens is that totally relieves the pension of that liability, so that starts lowering your costs dramatically, and people are saying, I would rather control it anyway, I would rather have that money myself. So, it's a huge win-win for both sides. What's most important is the city can now, in their basic county, can help budget for that. They can say, look, I know I only had to spend 8% of payroll or 9% of payroll, I don't have to worry about market swings up and down, I don't have to worry about whatever number of the actuaries are going to come in at. So, when we're starting to create these ideas around, create, you know, your steps for success, that's something we thought you might want to consider as you go through, is to put a study together that says, look, go out and tell us what the impact of this is going to be, tell us what the probability is that some people are going to raise their hand and say, I really like my pension, but if you're willing to pay me out of it, I'll take it. And then, what will happen if you say, for those people who aren't in the pension, you can have these other benefits, and let people make a choice. Miami did that so poorly, you know, that it just, they didn't communicate the message right. Fulton County did it right and it was a huge, huge savings for them and their employees are the happiest people in the world, the people who wanted to keep the pension kept it, and the people who wanted out of it, got out of it, they got out of it in an amount that they felt was proper for them, but they also have that profit sharing, that 401A, and they have the match on their 457, so they feel like they're in control, but it relieved the government of such a huge cost liability every year that it went back to becoming manageable again. So, those are steps you can start, have conversations about yourself and just start thinking about, that you might want to consider. Greg pointed out, coming into this, is this is a situation that's not going away. So, it's not something that you can say, well, we'll cut it out this year and we'll just pay the bill, which is twice what you're probably used to getting, because next year is probably going to be even higher. It's going to be higher for a couple of reasons, we really don't see any long-term huge upticks in the economy, okay? So, the stock market's not necessarily going to help you, or you shouldn't count on it helping you, but also, you're just continuing to hire people, your employers are continuing to get older, continuing to stay here, and that's good, that's what you... That's what you want, but you gotta pay for that. So by doing something like this and giving it back to employees, giving them the choice, for those who want it, they love it, and they keep it, and you can keep your promises to them. But it's shocking how many employees are willing to step away and say, "You know what? I'll just take my money now, and I'd love it if you're gonna give me some in the future," which gives you a budgetable amount. So these are just ideas. This is just what other big organizations, governments, and even private sector organizations are doing. I've worked on things like Bethlehem Steel, where we've seen it go to bankruptcy, go to the pension. And we've worked with organizations and governments who say, "Hey, it's not what we want out of this. We just wanna control it, but we also wanna give the employees something that they want and they feel and they know is a benefit. And what is this new generation of employees looking at?" And the honest answer to that is the new employees are looking at any job that they take as, you know, not long-term. They're looking at it as their life is gonna be filled with 10 career changes each, like in three years each. So the concept of working 20 years isn't there for these new, younger employees. So you take all that into consideration, it'll help your budget, it'll help you do some things, but you create some pretty neat things for your employees to do. So that's what we put together. We hope it makes it easier for anyone to understand if they don't. But just keeping the promise is all it is.
What is question again, my name is Mr. Paul. Very good presentation, and I know we've got a full agenda tonight.
Yeah, we're open.
So I'll be quick. I wanna just be sure I understood the point that you made, and you're not taking numbers on this presentation with the relative importance of employer comp or employee compensation. If I understand this correct, and I'll be sure I'm reading it right, of every $100 that an employer, that an employee in state or the government is coking in employer, 65 and a half cents, 25 cents of that $100, is going to salary in some shape, form, or fashion. 34 and a half cents is going to benefits.
Right.
Is going to benefits. All right, now, does that 34 and a half percent, and I presume it includes VICA Medicare and work and non-discretionary benefits?
Right, that's at the very bottom under legally required.
Okay, okay. So 34 and a half percent would include VICA Medicare, work and health insurance, discretionary and non-discretionary.
Right, thank you. And you see, too, that's pretty consistent across the board. Civil workforce, private industry, you know, 29, 30, 34, that's pretty consistent across there. It's just how that's broken up. Thank you.
Yes, sir. Currently, what we have, we had a population of 100, 105. I think in looking at the 2010 pension plan, we had 24 employees paying on the outside of the GMA program to invest more themselves. So almost 25% of the employees are feeling that they want more.
Yeah.
And I think that's an important thing, and they want to control some of that.
That's correct.
So I think that kind of gives you a feel for how people are feeling and looking at what's currently going on.
That's good. You currently do have a 457 plan, and that's very insightful to point that out. You've got people participating in it right now with very little, I guess, effort going forward to sort of stimulate them, and the elderly are just kind of taking it on themselves. The actuary report that we have from GMA doesn't address that, so we really couldn't go much deeper into that. But yeah, you do have one now, it just doesn't, I don't know how much of a benefit that is. And what we like to tell people is, you know, sometimes you get hung up in the finance of this, but what's important is remember, this is an employee benefit. It's an act of corporate generosity that's been given, you know, from the city to employees. So it is a gift. You're just gonna make sure that people can understand what they're receiving. Sometimes, people forget that, that it's not required for you to get the pension. It's not required for you to offer them a 457. It is a corporate gift of generosity. And I always like to tell people, don't ever forget that. If you do nothing with it, that's fine, but create a campaign or a program within your human resources department to remind people that if you don't already, you guys got a great benefit for working here. And their multiplier, 2.5, is very high. That's very generous.
And one other point is that before $1,000,000 realized decision one, we don't have to build that high. We can go 300,000 or 200,000. That's bound money that we can actually be utilizing for real costs.
It's not, you're not gonna have to stand.
Yeah.
Okay. And you can have a variety of different options within that.
No, let me say one thing, I'll never go, that's everything else being equal, the pension plan might go up by itself without even changing the multiplier. We don't have, I can, you know, I talked a little bit about your objections and see where it's going with the best and scenarios, but that is, that would be a great savings, but it's all things, it might be for a bigger number to start off than what you're looking at 2,000.
And one thing, I say this with great affection, your plan right now is what we, it's a real economic term. It's called a cleaner. You're not small anymore, but you're not big either. You're in between, you know, you're a cleaner. So you now have enough money where you can demand certain services, and you have access to certain share classes and investments out there that you might not have when you were small. Being inside of a pool of benefits with other people prohibits you from using that leverage of what your plan is growing to. So, you know, you've got adult money in this plan, and you can get a lot for that. Being in a pool is very good for small things. It's very, very good when things are really good economically. It causes you to question whether that's good for the future. When things get a little bit wrong, can when your assets, the assets you have, get to your size? So you've got enough assets to be able to, to where you can pick up market if you decide to do so and make something happen out of it. And Greg, just roll.
As you pointed out, a few minutes available, full agenda, but I want to thank Don and Greg for coming. I'd like for council to study, look at it, and then take the time to come back and look at some finer points on options, so we can really say, is it right, wrong? What should we do? And in the meanwhile, our employees have gotta know, the council is totally interested in their welfare, and it's not a panic.
Yeah, if there is a system that's a happy meter, making employees happy, there's no reason why you can't increase that and still make changes in your plan to lower the burden and the cost. It's just picking through it and doing it the right way. There are folks out there that would easily take the buyout right now, who would love to have more, you know, control over themselves. And then, if employees say, "No, I want this full name, and you made that promise you need to keep that." Like I said, Atlanta did a terrible job, and Fulton did a great job. Fulton County had a happy meter, went up, their employees loved it, and it relieved the burden, you know, of the cost. So they're on for it.
One quick thing, I just wanna clarify that I, unless I'm misunderstanding here, we are not going to give any consideration to, across the board, changing everything and not following through with the commitments that are made.
Absolutely, I don't even know that.
Any plan we take, if an employee chooses to leave it alone status quo, they will be allowed to make that choice.
Yeah, very good point. I think I would advise you, we certainly would, okay, to cut that benefit, no. Keep promises, but there's so many folks out there who are willing to say, "I think they're willing to go out of you there." You give them those options and it relieves a tremendous burden, you know, of all of you.
There have been some states that tried, that Colorado is the most recent one, and they're even, they're pulling over. The place got so bad, they decided, "We're gonna try to take away what we already promised you." Maybe you're not supposed to do it, but there is some, and certainly the private sector, there's a little bit more to play.
Yeah, people are healthy, and that's good. We love seeing healthy things, you know? That means it doesn't matter, talk to you about what you need to do, but this is going away. So from a doubtful point of view, we can tell you now, at the horizon, there's some serious increases in your costs coming up. There's easy fixes that your employees could be thrilled over. You can still make all the promises you made, and you can cut your costs. You gotta take through it, and, you know, consider a study that would give you all the options you need to make the decisions.
Where do you get the five elected two numbers from?
It's in there, we questioned that, too. It's actually in the actuary report.
Coach. I was up, but I wondered if they're in the two.
Through the two, the not.
You don't be. What you said in the evaluation is that, and it was very confusing to me, officials who came into office on or after 1191, did not continuously serve in office up until 2101, or ineligible during that period. Now, I'd have to sit down with a flow chart and figure that out. But there is something, there's something that was adopted at some point in time where some officials may, and I wish the newer ones would be able to, about any of them that worked, but there does seem to be some. And that's what we talked about. We'll talk a little bit about having less control over your plan. That was, I doubt it was done at the GMA level, but somehow, it made it somehow to GMA to make that change. It's something. Now, the benefit is a little different for officials. It's not up to them, it's only $6,000 per year served, so it's not as, it's lower than the other benefits for them. But I'm not sure how that matters.
Thank you all very much.
Thank you, appreciate it.
And along with item four, we'll open our FY2012 public hearing on our budget. Does anyone who would like to speak on that? Okay, let's get it.
Mr. Mayor, council members, interested citizens. These hard economic times, our citizens have had a cutback, and in some cases, eliminate their discretionary expenditures because of the inflationary impact, energy, food, and now water and sewer prices have had on their budgets. In some cases, our citizens have been, even been negatively impacted to the extent that they had to choose between food and their medical prescriptions. Some people, I heard, split their pills in half to cut down their prescription costs. They are living this year on the same income as they had last year, and it does not go as far as it did then. This should be a sign to you as council members that the budget you are discussing tonight, and most likely will approve of, that that council meeting should have a very sharp pencil taken to it. This is your, the citizens expect you to be frugal and spend their hard-earned tax dollars wisely. This is your opportunity to show the citizens by action that all the fluff and unnecessary spending will be removed. From a cursory review I conducted of the proposed budget, I immediately found over $20,000 of budgeted expenditures that I believe could be cut and would have zero impact on the city's operations. And this was just a quick one. Please remember that each council member has as an obligation to the citizens the responsibility to review all the budgeted line items to ensure that each one is absolutely necessary for the city to operate efficiently and effectively. Whatever amounts you find to eliminate could be placed in reserve for any unplanned expenses that may occur in the near future. The ball is in your court. You can choose to get rid of the fluff, or you can choose to disregard emulating the flugality displayed by the taxpayers in their own budgets. I'm sure that if you are asked why you voted for a specific line item expenditure, you will want to have a detailed answer substantiating the necessity for the budgeted expense. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Do you have a spot to speak on the budget? Any comments? Okay, anyone on the council, have any comments at this point?
I'd like to add a couple of questions. Sheriff Borum, Mr. Wood, is the budget, does it involve any tax increase?
No, sir, it is not.
Any property tax, even the property taxes have decreased for most people underpaid. Do you have everything that you, not that you want, but everything that you need from the city?
I'll be honest with you, I think we still have some additional staffing needs. I think our staff has been cut pretty severely. We'll make it through the year. But I know it's most especially in that some public works. Those crews are pretty fresh right now, so we'll make it.
And it is balanced.
The general fund is balanced.
Sheriff, we've got a lot of work to do on the water sewer.
I'm sorry.
Losing money still in the water sewer.
Yes, sir. General fund is balanced, water sewer fund is where we need to dedicate some attention.
Okay, thank you. Well, I'll admit, I'm guilty of not reviewing every single line item. I have no intention of doing that, because we have a very fine CFO and a very fine city manager. And if there's a member of the public that has a concern of a specific line item, I've got three fellow members that are gonna be reached, and one of them that you call, we can all look at. Thank you.
May I? Yes, I've got just one other comment on the budget. You said you needed staffing needs, but in the administrative section and in public works. But I don't think that we have addressed the needs in the fire department. As I pointed out at the last meeting, we are short-staffed, one person per shift, and that causes our firemen to violate, except the safety standards, about four men on a fire before one can go into the burning building. And I think the chief will attest to that. So when our guys respond to a fire, they can't go in the building. If they do, they violate safety standards. So we're short-staffed in the fire department, as well as short on fire stations. Though that's not addressed in the budget, I'm sure, correct?
No, sir, it's not.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, sir.
I did go by line item, and I know it is the duty of our city manager and CFO, but also, it's the council's duty to oversee what our budget's about. That's the reason we have the hearings, and that's the reason we have our time to look at and evaluate it. And I still see some fluff in there. I brought it forward at our budget meetings and did not get any positive response, but I still see about $50,000. And we'll work it through. So it's, the budget will go as is, but we'll be able to cut back on some of these other items.
Now, I wanna clarify one thing that Mr. Ryan brought up. Essentially, the water and sort of budget is balanced, so.
Well, we can't adopt it as a balance, but.
We gotta decide, right, before you adopt it, we gotta decide where we're going to get about $650,000 plus or minus $1,000 to balance just the 11 budget. And then, you're going to have to decide what you're going to do about future rate adjustments to achieve the necessary revenue in the 12 budget. But before we adopt our entire budget, we will pound that.
Yeah, what I believe, what I believe we have advised council of, Mr. Mayor, of course, and I think everybody knows the question of $650,000 plus or minus, Scott can give me the exact number, but what we need to finish this year, then also, some discussion about if we instituted an 8.5% rate adjustment effective October 1, that would give us the revenues that we needed for FYE12. Or if we do not do that, if that was deferred at the later in the year, it would equate to about 3/4 of a percent per each month that you would need to tack on to that.
Yes, sir.
So what we're talking about is, in simple terms, what I can understand is cash flow shortage in the water and sewer department. We're taking in X in revenue, and our expenses are gonna be X plus Y. Y is the shortage. What we're gonna have to do is complete further our genuine loan cushion that we have, or, and some have to decide probably to not either of that, or draw an additional, what, $600,000 or so down from, that's available to draw down in borrowed money as part of the $8 million that we're borrowing to finish the rest of it. We have to decide whether to do that. But as far as annual basis cash flow, we're still not meeting expenses on revenue. We are balancing the budget, that's a different concept. As far as the fluff and the budget. As, as far as the, the fluff in the budget, I guarantee you, um, I could find more than think is fluff. A budget is a, it's an estimate of what we're gonna spend, and an estimate of what we're going to bring in, that changes on a daily basis. Both of them are estimated numbers, and they're supposed to balance, but there's always going to be something somebody can question and say, we're spending an extra five thousand here long-term, maybe we need to short-term, maybe double, but at some point, we have to adopt this and, and move on, and put just kicking into that.
Mr. Mayor, on our current financial statement at the ends of, uh, June, we have in the unassigned fund balance, one point four eight nine million dollars. So if we have to go and find six hundred and fifty thousand, that's what we utilize that fund for that we've been holding on to all year. That would take us through the left, correct, Mr. Wood?
No, sir. Really, I don't think you can think of that as, as available cash that we could use discretionary. Scott, help me remember, we had three hundred and fifty thousand dollars of that, uh, that was set aside for the, uh, city hall roof repairs, air conditioning, ceiling repairs. Um, help me recall what those numbers were and what that, what that number, Mr. Barry Boyd referencing actually goes down to when you take those into account. I remember roof was three fifty, um, with the two fifty, uh, oh, we had four hundred, excuse me, four hundred thousand dollars of that would be used, four plus thousand being used to balance this year's budget.
Right.
So that was, so that's, that's, uh, what, that's eight hundred thousand right there of the, together, isn't that right?
Yes, sir.
How come it's not going to have on this statement here, because it hasn't been spent yet?
Yeah, because it was effective as of June, yes, sir.
Okay, so what was that number again?
Um, three fifty and four fifty.
Three fifty is four, the same choice?
Those are rounded numbers.
Four fifty.
Yes, sir.
What was the four fifty?
Uh, four fifty was, was used to balance this year's budget, uh, excuse me, twelve budget, I'm sorry, FYE twelve budget. Think of it as carried on money, so it's pretty...
So we still have pretty close to, I have the number.
Maybe slightly more than that, but yes, sir.
So if we're looking at six fifty, we're, we're in the ballpark and throw the ball downfield.
Yeah, I would invite you to, uh, to, to reconsider though, the fact that we're, we're entering the, the, the revenue drought season, uh, the rules. All our property taxes have been collected. We had tax sales, too, so all of our property taxes have been collected, put those far this year.
Okay, when you said we could not use this unassigned fund balance in reference to the fact that we had already earmarked monies for it, so it's not one point four, is that what you were saying? It's not that we can't have that money? I, I thought...
No, you, you are using the money, but I didn't want anybody to be under the illusion that we had one point four million dollars that was already assigned somewhere or already appropriated somewhere. It would be closer to eight, uh, eight, uh, one point four minus eight, so it would be six or whatever the number was.
Okay, I, I just wish that I had that, so when I'm looking at it, and I know June numbers were here, but I'm still thinking, when I see that number and I don't see anything earmarked, then I'm thinking we have one point four. And, uh, it's just a matter of catching up with what we're looking at expenditures. But it, the good news is, we have some money in the unsigned fund balance, so, uh...
We got a plus in front of the number, not a minus, right?
Okay, all right, thank you.
Yes, sir.
Any other comments? Okay, uh, then we will close the, uh, public hearing, and, uh, we'll go into the public input period. We have two, uh, individuals who have signed up for that. Um, Crystal Bieber, come on.
Let me, let me say before she starts there, that, uh, we met with, with her and some representatives recently, and, uh, she is, uh, working to put Bojangles restaurant up just above, uh, where Buffalo is, so...
Thank you, thank you. Thank you, Mayor Hopgood, and good evening, ladies and gentlemen, and to the city of Canton. Like you said, my name is Crystal Bieber, I represent Peak Holdings, I'm a franchisee for Bojangles. Little bit about my background, I reside in Pickens County, I currently reside there in Jasper. However, my husband and I have owned Riverstone kind of practice here in the city of Canton for over decades, and we believe that, um, despite running our first location for Bojangles in Jasper, that the city of Canton would be a primary place for our second location. Uh, we actually do have the territory, Palmetto, New Ridge, uh, and, and down into Precise. However, we've chosen the city of Canton for various reasons, mostly because we feel like this is our backyard since we've been here for ten years, in a, in a different business. The reason that I'm here tonight is because we have purchased a piece of property that is located on Beauty Drive in Riverstone, or excuse me, and, um, involved around Highway. The, the problem that we're having on that piece of property, um, I feel is minute, um, you're gonna find it here represented in this master plan. If you look, this is master plan number three one one dash zero zero three dated back to two thousand and three. If you look at the second page, and please excuse our notes, I'm not a private person, so y'all read away. Well, number four, it says permissible uses shall include the following, A, restaurant facility without a drive-through window. And hopefully, uh, we have strong enough awareness that many of you know that we have to have a drive-through window. And, uh, my reason to be here tonight is if you look at, uh, the master plan, what it states about should the intended use change, the applicant herself shall be required to resubmit for approval of an amendment to the master plan by the mayor and the city council. And so all I'm asking tonight is that you adhere to what the master plan states, which is that you would allow me to submit an amendment, um, to the mayor and the city council for you all to approve. I have already submitted that, and what I've been told by planning and zoning is that it has to go through planning and zoning as well. And my request to you all this evening is I would like to bypass planning and zoning and simply have the mayor and, and the council members approve, uh, or disapprove our amendment. And what their advantages to that would be, and where I believe the city of Canton would benefit, is simply that we would be allowed to open thirty days sooner. Not only would we be allowed to open thirty days sooner, but we would be allowed to employ eighty employees thirty days sooner, approximately forty to fifty thousand in payroll that would be lost forever. It can never be redeemed. Furthermore, if, if by you allowing us to build thirty days sooner, we would generate the overall contractor economy by simply having tax fees be paid earlier, contractors, general contractors coming to work, people moving dirt, moving trees, going to the lumberyard down the street, et cetera. I do believe that this would be an economy boost for the city of Canton. Last but not least is that we will not be in construction until this amendment is approved, and if it is not approved, we will not build. Um, so furthermore, I believe that it would be in the best interest of both parties for us to simply just follow what the master plan states, which is that it has to be approved by the mayor and the city council. And knowing that the master plan is saying that it does need to go through planning and zoning for an intended use change.
Where, where were you reading from on that? I'm sorry.
Page, page two, number four.
Page two?
Number four. Permissible use shall include the following, A, B, and C, and underneath that it addresses should the intended use change, the applicant shall be required to resubmit for approval by the mayor and the city council.
I, I just asked our city attorney there what he thought for it, and he said he would really need to look at it and see if that's, if that were the case, 'cause if, if, uh, if our ordinance doesn't require that, and, and it should only come before the mayor and council, then that's really more well done, and, and move forward with it, I think. Uh, as long as our ordinance doesn't require it, and maybe this is, uh, you know, leaves out, leaves out a word or two there, and is, is representative of what that ordinance actually is. So, uh, what we'll need to do, I would think, is take a, you know, let it take a few days to take a look at it, because we definitely would like to help you in any way that we can.
Is that the only part of this that's holding us up here?
It's the only part that would hold up construction.
Other than the rest?
There are no issues that we would like to change, and if you would like to go through planning and zoning, uh, we don't mind doing that, but this actually stops construction. Because obviously, you can't start construction on a building that may not be free for a drive-through. Other issues may, you know, can be worked out.
I thought when we met, I'm sorry, sorry.
Uh, Mr. Patton, you can speak to this?
Actually, I, and I'll continue there, I thought that, uh, when we met, that we had this worked out so that the timeframe altogether, even going through planning and zoning would, would work for, for everyone that happened, maybe.
That is true, Mayor Hopgood, uh, that was, um, taking into the, the consideration that we would just go ahead and build on behalf that obviously you all would approve a drive-through, noting that since nineteen ninety-three, uh, other drive-throughs have opened in that same area, such as Wendy's directly across the street. I have no, no real fear in my heart that you all would not approve this, however, you do have to understand that a two million dollar investment, that one percent chance that you don't, is just too great for me to look forward and build a Bojangles that you may not approve. And I realize it's a very slight risk, but it's just not one that I would...
Well, honestly, I, you know, in our discussion, I, I, personally, I didn't think it'd be a problem either, uh...
Right.
With the council, including that, since their building's almost identical to this across the street, you know, drive-in windows, flat roofs, very, very similar, so, in fact, it may be very hard not to assume, but, uh, I, I fully understand what you're saying. So Ken, do you have any?
Uh, I have specific language in the zoning ordinance that all, uh, conditions of approval and, uh, rezonings, annexations, that sort of thing, uh, the ordinance does specifically specify that it goes to the planning commission for recommendation, then on to the mayor and council. And I'm pretty sure that that language in the master plan as well, Mr. Dyer and I can verify that, uh, and get work back to you all customarily, and every record that I've looked at going all the way back to the nineteen eighties, that is what's taking place with master plans, annexations, rezonations.
Okay, Hop?
Ken? Just another question, uh, if this went through planning and zoning and the planning commission as, as normal, that would require the advertising and the additional expenditure, but I think we went through this on another topic, a lot of thousand dollars, correct?
Correct.
Thank you. The, the only thing that I, I mean, the only thing that I don't want to do is set a precedent that if, if we do, if we do this, and it states very clearly in the ordinance that we're not supposed to, then we, we've just thrown everything else out, we don't, we don't need planning commissioning, in my opinion. But hopefully, there's, there's a caveat in there that will allow us to, to do that based on the fact that it is simply a, a revision, uh, amendment to, uh, master plans. But, just saying.
We did, and the only ones that are pleased that we've done that are been churches. Yeah, those, those churches, and some of them were in emergency situations, you know, we did, and, you know, I guess the mayor, mayor and council has the authority to wing it, essentially every time anything comes up, but I'm pretty sure that I did.
Let me just ask one question to both Mr. Patton and Mr. Dyer, can you all give this lady an answer about, say, Monday of next week?
Yes, sir.
We talked to the mayor and council about Monday, then reached this plea to request the repertory agenda for action, that next person?
Well, I, without, you know, many figure about this, I, I think you're gonna have a public hearing no matter what. The question is whether, that it has to go through planning and zoning, or whether you choose to bypass it and bring it here. But it's a zoning change that you would have to have public hearing on.
So it's only, uh, if I'm being shifty, yeah?
And my main concern, Mayor Hopgood, is simply the timeframe in order to make this project work. And, and if I may say, um, my goal here is not to, to be level in any way, shape, or form, and cause any problems to you all in the future. Hopefully, perhaps this would make it easy for you, and this would be a way out, because the wording in the master plan says they state those two things. And I don't know if that would provide an, an exception to the rule for you, uh, I'm just, I'm just a, a young lady who's trying to, to live the dream here, and unfortunately, I've got a timeframe that I do have to, you know...
What did you say, what did we talk about here before the timeframe goes? You were saying talking about it would be the late thirty days?
Correct.
Or would you gain to deal with it all? Have you had any...
I, I do have a certain timeframe by which I have to expend all of my funds. Uh, I have an SBA loan, and, uh, and I do have a timeframe that the windows must have to be spent, um, and so, yes, sir, that would be correct, and it would be, it would be a large, it would be a large expense to proceed forward, um, into the winter, not knowing what other time delays we may have, and not being able to finish the project.
What was your story on day four or something?
Well, originally, we were on another property, uh, that fell through, so originally, we had a year, um, but we, but we started that in January this year. So we need to be completed by January of two thousand and twelve. Uh, if we have to take ninety days before we can, you know, we can start construction, that could be, that could be a problem for us.
You know, I, actually, I, I, maybe I made it wrong, but didn't, didn't we talk about, uh, that y'all were gonna actually do a set of plans that conformed to our ordinance?
Yes.
And then you would have your permit, you could get started going, you could come in after we talked about it and went through this council and planning and zoning and whatever, and, and eliminate those two conditions about the roof and the drive-through?
Yes, sir. Um, and I would like just to, to help save some time, because I would like to create new stuff, start upgrading and whatnot. Um, my husband and I just don't feel comfortable starting to build the building. We were actually gonna start building the building, and we felt like we could, we could design a plan that didn't show a drive-through, and then once you all approved everything, we could open up a drive-through, so to speak. Um, but once again, we just don't feel comfortable building a Bojangles prototype with a one percent chance that what if, what if you guys didn't approve it? Um, you know, I'm not, I'm not one of these forty, forty store franchisees that just, you know, I couldn't take a two million dollar bet.
I made it, if, if we've done it in the past, is it should head north counting here?
Yeah. Well, I, I, I thank a lot of the, uh, Ken and, uh, attorney.
Then, then, get back to us, so that we'll be there on the agenda for two weeks.
Answer to her end of this council.
Two weeks.
One thing I would like to say is that I'm very aware of her restaurant in Pickens, because I'm a business about a park away. Uh, it was a very good run franchise, I look hard at it, do a good job. Obviously, the city wants to have this here, look forward to coming, we want to be as visible as we can, but there are certain things we have to check out, uh, attorney will certainly check that out quick before you get the baton over for it. So I'd like to have that, but just speaking to council, I'd like to say, thank you, please, uh, the person who's ever heard of those, because all the people, but, uh, there's a couple of...
Thank you, thank you.
You know, I, I, I totally tend to agree with you what this says in this, uh, I'm assuming this is the conditions, and if we put in there, whether it's in our ordinance or not, that one of the conditions for any, uh, master plan approval would be to resub, resubmit it to the mayor and council, which to me like, that's all we get to do. But anyway, that's what we all do to decide, because that's in there, conditions, that in order to change it, it goes back to the, uh, the master... uh, the master plan by the mayor council. And it's almost like that's a condition. So, if it's in an ordinance, it's screwed like an apple. What's that?
That is, uh, what the conditions state, the conditions of master plan purpose. But what, uh, Mr. Dyer and I need to verify is that, uh, that written condition is, uh, compliant with the ordinance.
It doesn't have to be. If it's a condition of this development, and it was approved as a condition, then it's just like, it's just like the drive-in window. The drive-in window doesn't comply with our ordinance. Because what's in this is going to count, might be. Like, that's, that's what you tend to work out, uh, see if it does apply to maybe any project. That's what it says. Okay? All right.
Thank you for your time and attention.
Two weeks. I thought you couldn't get back to extra money.
Yeah, but we can't echo it till we get back to you.
Right, okay. Two weeks.
Okay, thank you all.
Okay. Uh, can we, uh, we have one other person to, to speak, and we extend a ten minute here by additional ten. Those are players who got sixty-five second hours? Um, still?
I have a big mouth, I don't need it too close to me. Um, I'm Pat Hall, I live in the city of Canton on East Main Street. I have a good working relationship with the city of Canton. I think you know how much I love this town. Um, first of all, I want to make it perfectly clear, perfectly clear, to each of you, that what I'm about to say is my personal opinion alone. In no way does what I'm about to say reflect the ideas and opinions of the government study committee. They don't know that I was going to speak tonight, I wasn't planning on speaking until about an hour ago. This Monday, I received an email from one of you in response to an email I had mailed earlier, and I'm going to read the portion of the email, um, because the part that I want to address has nothing to do with the body of the email I mailed, nor does it have anything to do with the person's initial response to me. But I think this, this is very telling. And the person that sent this to me has been a friend of mine for thirty years. This is hard for me. The email says, "The government study committee really is what this is all about, isn't it? It's quite obvious that Jean, Miss Mayor Hocke, instigated the committee to change the balanced government power structure that we currently have to one where mayor has a larger disproportionate share of power, control, and authority. The recommendations will, will reflect this." This person made this statement having not seen our recommendations, having no knowledge, very little knowledge, of the more than eight months that we have spent in this committee. I have personally spent hours upon hours online studying ten different city charters. I have spent more hours comparing those charters, documenting the comparisons. I can't begin to calculate the hours, but I can assure you that I am only one member of this committee that has spent that much time. What we have been careful to do is put in the time we needed to, to be careful, to stay, to look at ten different cities that are geographically around us and have similar populations to ours, and also to be extremely careful to take personalities out. We don't know who's going to be mayor after December thirty-first, we don't know who's going to be on city council, at least two, three of them are going to be. Um, to say that you know what our recommendations are going to be, and that you've already made up your minds, is so telling to me, that it's personally offensive, I don't know if it's offensive to the other committee members or not, and I'm removing myself from what they're going to say Judge Pope will eloquently say in our case to you. But I was personally offended by this, and I wanted to make sure that everybody on this council knew that it is my hope and my prayer that when you read this document, you look at it with open minds and open hearts, and you think about the best for the city of Canton, not for the elected individuals who sit in your seats tonight. Thank you.
Mayor O'Good, now we go to the comments. Sure. Thank you. That was my email, and I made those statements based on what various members of the committee had quote leaked to me over the last year, year and a half. Now, I want to, Mayor Hocke, face to face, and Mr. Raff, face to face, Judge Pope, all you all on the committee. I sincerely hope that the information I was given was wrong, and my mind is open. I greatly appreciate the efforts of my friends that are here, and my friends that are not here, Mayor Hocke. I hope I'm wrong.
Thank you, Bill. Appreciate it. We got, uh, one other individual I'd like to recognize now, that, uh, actually comes to a lot of these meetings, most of them. I mean, you rarely see anyone here if, uh, if, if he's not here, he's here. Uh, just wanted to say that to, uh, Andy Alexander's having a birthday coming up. I don't say how old he is, but it's a... We'd like to wish you happy birthday. We appreciate your attendance and your interest in this city, we really do. Um, okay. Under, let's see, under old business, we have the consideration of the FY two thousand budget ordinance. Basically, uh, this is our public hearing tonight, and discussion with any at this point will constitute the second reading of our proposed FY two thousand twelve budget. Okay? We will act, officially act on that, and I will assume the village rate at the same time in our, uh, next council meeting. Mayor and council compensation ordinance? Okay, subject to having a final digest back, but, I mean, this gotta be, this gotta be pretty close anyway. Um, mayor and council compensation ordinance, which we've talked about before, which simply restates what has been the case for, since, I guess, what, in ninety-three, or ninety-five, or something like that? So, uh, we're just going to update our records in that aspect. So, does anyone have any comments or questions about that? If not, this will constitute the first reading of, of that. Uh, our charity youth football association agreement up the use of bowling parks, uh, Mr. Dyer has put that together, and he's included in your package, I believe.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, ma'am.
I need to make a comment about that, and get some clarification from Mr. Dyer, because we need to modify this. I, uh, spoke with, uh, Ms. Turcot regarding this document, and shared with her what the, um, policies and agreements, uh, were. Her concern was in regards to number one, Mr. Dyer, about the practices on Monday, Tuesday, and Thursdays from six to eight-thirty, and her concern was, um, due to the issues that we're having now with the heat and et cetera, if they had to cancel one of their practices because of heat advisory, or for lightning purposes, or inclement weather, could they then, if it was not a part of this agreement, use another day of the week, if there was not another event going on?
We would need to say so.
We need to say so in the...
We think we can, that, that was just the days that were given to me. We could say three days a week, and not specify the days. We could spare the hours at six, ten-thirty, and say five-thirty to nine. I mean, we, that's just the terms that were given to me.
Okay, these are not, the terms were correct, but we're not sure that we're correct with everything that is occurring at this time because of heat structures, athletes, and practice times, and whatever else, and inclement weather, and they're not willing to keep on a fair amount of light here. If we need to include any changes that may occur in this document, and you're saying yes, so I need to get that with you to modify it and get it to council, but it just says...
What I would prefer to do is exactly that, is to say the number of days and not specify them, and the number of hours and not specify hours. Just say six to dusk, or, or something like, forty-eight hours, or something. So, nobody's limited to something we can't proceed.
Well, how do they, how do they, if you don't have the dates now, how are they going to schedule a group going over there, and they get over there, somebody else is out there playing in their area, and, uh, what's going to end up with? That's what I mean. Unless it's specified, maybe, maybe we could specify another day, even Friday, or what sort of, yeah.
Well, just looking at Fridays or Wednesdays as an option, day for them to practice on, but she only said that in the event that something else is going on, you're scheduled in that particular area.
Mr. Mayor, at this point, nobody else is scheduling.
Monday, or just showing up out there and play out?
Well, I mean, to my knowledge, the city's not giving anybody else authority to that.
And Rosie was there this weekend. I thought I saw...
I recall I never coming to the town for a meeting.
I was ready.
I think we, we need to think about, number one, we, the ordinance is written precisely with what Mr. Turcot asked us, basically, the words, those specific days. If, if somebody's planning on going out there and playing a little game with their kids or something, and they happen to look on the city website and say, okay, schedule for this day, so we'll put this day, but the next day, and then there's a bunch of kids out there playing football, and they got to change. I'm with the mayor here, I think we need to stick to a specific day, and it rains after practice, it just gets rained out that day.
And, and, you know, we could certainly say that if they, if it's not being utilized, it'd be welcome to go in, just one factor, you know. I'm not exactly having word that.
Mr. Mayor, would it be advisable to, to put in there any other day than specify even express permission of, somebody?
Have a opinion there, I'll see.
Mr. Kat, Mr. Candy, or Mr. Wood, or, you know?
Because if they can notify them in a, in a plan, so they can, they can make sure it's open for, for their use. You think that's something else?
Well, no, no, they're in, I mean, what I've better thought, we got a way to say these days, or if one of those is rained out, whatever, canceled, we call them, see if another day's available in your reserve.
Okay. Okay, um, the alcohol ordinance, we, uh, we had a good work session on that a few weeks ago, and, uh, made some changes in it, I believe. I haven't, actually haven't been to the...
As it, as it turns out, there weren't that many things changed from after that work session. But what I did change was, you know, the first point is, we talked about the way to measure, uh, I thought the sense was to leave it the way it is current, so there's no change to that, which is the straight line. So, there, I know we talked about that, but I thought the sense was don't touch that.
Crowed lines, is that what you said?
Well, it's not word, that would be, it's straight line, as opposed to, well, actually it is, it's in there, the crow's plies, yes. There were so many swirl around, yes. The current was in there, the crow's plies, that's what it is.
What if the crow doesn't fly straight?
A straight line, as the crow flies.
Crow's always...
I, I, I got the sense at that work session that you wanted to eliminate the distance from churches for beer and wine, which would bring us inclined, the state law, there is no state law, distance requirement from churches for beer and wine, so eliminate that, that's taken out. I also then made a change, because we had an exception for, uh, the state law allows us to accept the distance requirements from distilled spirits or consumption of the premises. Our previous ordinance said the central downtown core, in plan unit zoning districts, and I added a, when the prohibited or protected grounds, there's a tenant in a shopping center, just as another exception, because that's, we're going into that. And I thought from our conversations, that would be okay, you know. I took out the, um, preferences to character of the applicant that I heard in two different places. Um, and then there was a question about the excise taxes, and whether the amounts needed to be in there. So, the amounts were set by state law, but the state law allows us to adopt it. I, I want to leave it alone, I don't want to take them out. I'm concerned that we have to actually adopt the numbers.
We don't.
But we don't decide the amount.
Um, that does change from time to time.
Yeah, it does appear to change a little.
Well, it does change often, but, uh, and if, if we did, unless we state something to the effect that we will, will charge the highest rate that's allowed by state law, then we could find ourselves charging less, less than that.
We'd have to keep track, right? If the state law changed, if, if we didn't know, we could then be less. We could change it to say, as high as not permitted under state law, or I can reference the statute and say, I have it to be amended. Uh, there's a couple ways to handle that.
But other words, the amount that you got in there, I think, for two and two?
There's three different ones, different, different ways.
He can change the language if that's called...
Correct, we would just anticipate changes. Right now, it does the preferences state law.
Now, the other, is that pretty much it?
That's what I changed from the first changes to now, I would say a whole lot of changes before that we talked about.
Now, we also have there, as you know, one of the items in there is, is reducing the ratio between food sales and alcohol sales, from sixty-fourty to fifty-fifty. And, you know, that's, that's the decision the council needs to make on that as well. You, um, the county currently is at sixty-fourty, and there are maybe some of the cities that are at fifty-fifty now.
Most of the cities around these cities are at fifty-fifty, or which are just like the fifty-fifty.
So, that's, that's a decision, if that's, if you're happy with that, one way or the other, but then that will be in the, that'll be in the ordinance, it's fifty-fifty. All right, um, let's see. Okay, then, our discussion here tonight, then, will constitute the first reading on the alcohol ordinance. Okay, under new business, uh, the government study committee, uh, discussion and presentation, uh, the, actually, the, the, the item that says former government study committee recommendation, which is very misleading, because there was never any intention, intention of the form of government, it continues with the, uh, even, even under the proposals here, as the, uh, manager council form of government. And I think that the, the real purpose of this, from my perspective, was that we clarify items that's already in there, and that we state procedures that have occurred for eons that are unclear in the ordinance itself. There's probably two or three new things in there that, uh, you know, that I hope you will look at with an open mind. I hope you'll voice your objection, if you have an objection to any of those items, uh, you know, that's not part of the stone. But I think it's important that we have a document that doesn't leave it unclear as to the duties, the functions, the directions that the, the city needs to go in, because that's sort of what we've had. It's, it's just sort of like the, uh, like planning and zoning, historically, very historically, and, and as long as I know, the mayor made a nomination, but it was subject to the rule of the council. And that's what's happened. But it wouldn't say that in the charter, that's the way it's been, has been functioning. So, I mean, there's just a, a lot of different things in there. Uh, you know, it didn't say who, who's responsible for the agenda, even though we among ourselves have agreed that an agenda is prepared, and, you know... have agreed that an agenda is prepared, and, you know, any member of the council, the city attorney, the mayor, city manager can add to that anything they want to talk about, okay? But someone needs to be the one that is, that sets the agenda initiative that openly responsible for. So, anyway, I want you to at least take a look at, they're going to, I think, just present it, I don't exactly have a eye on this, but I think you'll see an executive summary later, that gives you ideas of what they are proposing, and just look at it, you know, nobody's asking you to make comments tonight, or anything like that, because I don't think any less of the chance to look at it. And I want you to look at it, voice your objections, if you have anything you approve of, we'd like to hear that as well. So, anyway, I'll ask Judge Pope and Mr. Russ to come up.
Hello, Russ. Good to have you out.
I would like to thank the committee that's been working on this thing, pushing a year now, and it's certainly not, not been easy, I'm sure, I mean, reviewing quite a number of different charters, along with the city charter. This fifteen-member group have been real serious about it, I mean, there's some things that I'm sure they wouldn't have put in there, even if I had to ask them to, you know, I know they, but they have looked at it very seriously, and tried to see the other charters, and to relate how these might, maybe help the city function better well into the future. Judge?
Mr. Mayor, I'll go up again, like I said, I'd like to represent this Bo James vote, you know. I'm going to throw a card over. I say I'm talking to you, but you're impressed, maybe.
She'd probably appreciate if you just go buy some chicken.
I want to talk to her about that. I thought she ought to go ahead and build a drive-in, just don't open it up. Anyway, mayor, and members of the city council, and of course, the clerk, and the city manager, and the city attorney, and mayor, I'm good at speed, but I consider serving, serving the city's government study committee, I, I told him I didn't, I'd have to think, I 'm kind of semi-retired, and, but still with my sons, and like small, pasty Pope, all the going. But I did think about it, and then a life resident of the city, I accept it, because I'm proud of the city. I've traveled the world, whatever it is, Public Sam and the Navy, but that's where I went, he says, where are you from, Pope, I say, Captain Zor. Wherever I served, I really am proud of the city. And I'm doing it as a public service. Thank you for allowing me this opportunity to present the results of our work on the city of Canton Charter. You have all been provided with a copy, draft copy, draft, the executive summary, listing suggested changes to the current charter. I always came back again, after twenty-nine, nineteen fifty-five, after the cadence expired, I went with Howard Henderson, and he made me assistant city attorney, and gave me the job of revise on the city's charter. And so this is my second attempt. This summary includes each current section, the suggested change to that section, the reason for the change, and the reference citation on the change. And this executive summary represents almost ten months of work with all the members that made it. We reviewed many other charters of cities, and the best governmental practices of the Georgia Municipal Association. I have friends down there when I was down in San Diego, I called them, I said, how about telling them, what do you think about this? And they were kind enough to tell me their opinion. No single city charter offered a solution with the city of Canton. We selected the best sections of many other city charters, and applied the changes where they were needed to give the city of Canton a charter that will improve our current charter, and make really a modus operandi for cities. I've reviewed this document, and my suggested changes have been included in this draft copy. The city attorney has also asked him, and we admit, and he's reviewed this final draft, and the changes he recommended have been included, provided by other lawyers that have served cities and asked them for their advice. And now you thought about stopping somebody on the street and asking them? I want you to take this document with you tonight, review it, so that our committee can answer any questions you may have, and prepare, along with any and all other committee members, to meet with you and answer any of your questions, your concerns, what's relevant. We can eat with you one-on-one, you can buy me lunch, or in any combination, up to all the council members, if you desire, or all the council meetings. If you prefer to meet as a group outside the city council meeting, the mayor will monitor them, prevent the creation of a quarrel, he'd let me know how you would like to proceed after you've discussed it among the members of the city council. This draft copy of the executive summary represents a great deal of work by this committee, and myself, I put in many hours. We all very proud of it, we all thank you for your careful considerations of these suggested changes. And I'm not going to receive any questions after, but I think you got to take it home instead. Brian, I'll have you read the scriptures, I want you to read this.
I'd just like to say, I'd thank everyone that's been involved in doing this, I'm sure the council are all reading with open minds, and, you know, we want the best for the city, that's the reason we all went in the circle, same as what Judge Pope just said. And I know there are some areas that need to be changed, and we look forward, looking through this, and coming back with ideas.
Thank you.
I'd also like to thank everyone that's on this committee, and I appreciate the time and the direction, and what the ladies do, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Judge?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Sound like you've been on the white line a long time.
Get your plan, get your plan, drive through it.
Under the city manager's report, discussion of the all the current qualifications, I will, let me make a comment, and then if you have others, that's fine. I would, I would like to suggest on that, and work on any of them, that we ask that our city manager and CFO and any other member of the administration, that they choose to narrow those down to three themselves, and then, once it's narrowed down to three, I would suggest that they, they get key proposals for just those three, and then bring those back, that's my suggestion, that I don't, I don't think everybody hears every word of that one of those proposals.
Lots of hell we asked. Not every word, but I did, I did send an email to everyone on council, recommending what I thought were the four that I felt the most comfortable with, and I agree with you, because they all seem, they all seem to be well-qualified, in my opinion, four were better qualified than the rest, but fee structure is going to be the most important thing, and I think that's why I agree with you that.
If the three aren't, seem to be most qualified first, then get the fee structure from then, that'd be my suggestion.
I'm just going to add too, that I concur, and so I got involved, I had my list, but I didn't share it with Mr. Wood and, or Mr. Price, but I concur that it needs to be Mr. Wood and Mr. Price, and whomever else I think fit to do it, and come back to us with their recommendation, and we'll go from there.
I just want to say, I know councilman Rush was laying on the beach sand underneath the umbrella.
He didn't have no Corona.
Had plenty of time on his hands to read through those, when I got them, I looked at it, and I said, we have a city manager and CFO that can handle these details, because if you recall, I haven't taken the accounting one-on-one yet, and so I'm really not up to speed on that, so I just said, two would be fine with me, but if it's three, it's fine, but I would like to ask our city manager if he would highlight certain little points of why this one, or why that one, within your recommendation, versus just coming in and saying, here's, thank you.
And then, do you financials are in your agenda package? Does anyone have any questions regarding those? I think, I'm very, very curious regarding the, and I know we can't get it right now, but I'm very curious about the revenues from water and sewer fees, and views of problems with our billing, it's not, June has not represented before, we might have, oh, had we not had those billing problems. In fact, if I remember correctly, June is about what it was last year, and yet, we have looked to, in some cases, a thirty percent or more increase in water fees. So, it may take another month or two to get it stabilized out, so we can really see the effect of the increase in fees, as well as the new way we actually bill, which is, previously, the bill was pretty much rounded down, okay? You seventy-five hundred gallons, or seventy-three hundred gallons, you paid for seven, seven thousand, okay? And when they, and sometimes when they started back over, your beginning number the next month might be a notch lower than the ending number before, but anyway, you could have lost as much as a thousand gallons, a city could have lost revenue on as much as a thousand gallons per customer, okay, each month, that would be the potential, but we don't know how much we really were losing. And I think the increase in the fees, along with whatever increase this may have, may very well be telling, and may well tell us what, if any, additional increases, mayor may not be necessary.
One comment on the water billing is, in the two years that I've been on council now, I have never had as many complaints from residents as the current water billing, because we have to switch over to the new system, and I really want to commend the people in the water department, because they're working double duty on this, trying to resolve it, and it's just a snipper with other things, but I do think we need to get this resolved, and I know the city's working on it, but I have had a lot of complaints. The other thing on the financials I wanted to mention is that, I think I sent an email to all about the sanitation dump site, where we changed the rates in April, or May, and we thought we were going to be coming up profitable on it. While we used to lose ninety thousand dollars a year, and now I project we only lose forty-five, and I would still recommend, as I did earlier, that we either raise the price to the same price as waste management charges at their dump site, to forty or fifty dollars a load, or just shut it down completely, and let everyone go to the other sites.
The number of, the number of loans that lay substantially changed?
I think the number of residents have changed, or the number of cars coming in, I didn't compare them to previous months, but what I did see is that, you know, we're just, we're still losing money, I mean, we're not, we're not covering our costs.
The numbers of vehicles coming, because that should have changed substantially.
If I remember correctly, run about three hundred a month.
I think there was an increase in the number of city residents, but a decrease in the number of non-residents, it was still possible loans, as I stated earlier, I think we, we said I think, we said too low.
Yeah, I think we lost eleven thousand dollars in one month.
I'd like to put that on the agenda, so we can follow up.
Okay, Cody, make sure that's on our agenda. We'll have a discussion over at the next meeting.
We need to stop the bleeding on that spot up there.
Okay. Okay, I see, discussion of bids and bid award for the CDBG project, bowling park, water line replacement. Is this the water line replacement, or the sidewalk, or the subway? Is this Mr. Water High, he's got his example, do you want to mention that? Is this one, Strickland Pipeline, was a low bid, around ten thousand dollars, I believe? Anybody else have any questions about that? You have the list of bidders in your package there, and Strickland wants a low bid, so.
One question I had, was it so much lower than the other?
Yeah, it was certainly much, you mean, was it that much lower than the second?
About thirty or three of them right there, yeah. Ten, ten five, eleven.
Not now, but there was a big gap to start with.
That might have been signed up on the side.
Okay, so, I assume we'll award that at the next, next meeting, then. Discussion of hospital agreement, I believe that we've, that been pulled from the agenda. Did we even make amendment on that, or did that get?
I think we sent out a notice, Mr. Mayor.
Okay.
And I think it's a matter of, we may just shift this to our next meeting.
Yes, sir. Okay. So will this one, that we had any objection to that? Discussion of bond draw language, I can handle that up here. Mr. Dar, can you?
Sure. You got a presentant to use in documents that have been drafted by bond council, consists of two resolutions, one of which you would adopt, and then amendment to the agreement between the building authority and the city. The change is to add, well, we're changing the definition of project in bond documents, because the bond is limited to the reservoir, so basically, it's opening the definition up to include other water and sewer projects that will be attached, as an exhibit A, if you don't have the listed project, so the language will be to amend the definition of project to include other projects, which would allow you to tap into that bond money for some of the other water and sewer needs.
Okay, anyone else have any comments? I think I set pretty clear, so I won't hash out too long, other than the fact that I do feel that a commitment was made to use the money that we borrowed for the reservoir, and that we shouldn't really spend it for other items. And secondly, that if, if we were to use this money for these projects, I think there would, we could pay it back quickly, you know, but, because we're paying interest on that money until 2014, and I think one of the, one of the strong things that Ms. Tanner, in fact, during the discussion, was rightfully adamant about, was that we have a short call, and that there's no prepayment penalty on those bonds, so that if we, if we finish our reservoir, and we have two million dollars left over, or a million and a half, or whatever, we could put that on that debt, the principal amount of that debt that we're using. I think there'd be a tendency, if we do this, this is a little confusing, I don't want to confuse somebody, but if we do this with the bonds, it'll be so easy when it comes time, a year from now, to repay that, where we really don't have to pay it right now, because, you know, once we pay that debt service, you know, we can keep paying on it for another sixteen years or so, at an interest of over, probably over a half a million dollars with the interest if we keep doing that. That's the concern that I have. Actually, theoretically, if you took it from the bond, and turned right around, paid it back, and that's the first year, or whatever, probably no difference, really, than taking a general fund, but I'm just concerned that... But I, I'm just concerned that there's a, the tendency that we would have, uh, to, to push it aside as bad as we need money here, well, we'll go get this, well, we don't have to pay that right now, you know, so we can move it up down. But I guess even a stronger incentive to me not to do so is the fact that, uh, you know, we borrowed the money for, for the reservoir and, uh, that's what we said and, you know, uh, I think, I think, I know things change from time to time, but I feel like I'm in a position at that point to stick with it. Anyone else have anything you want to say? Okay. Um, how else payment by phone, vendor contract?
I will. I want to repeat everything that's in my brief and letter to you. I think it's a complicated back with, uh, if you have any questions, right as soon as I know, but, uh, we were recommending that we, uh, begin a contract with a company official payment corporation and start having our telephone credit card. Now people already can pay online, uh, for dollar and quarter. This would be people who call in and acquire the time of current, acquire the time of our staff to sit down and manually take down all their credit card data. This would simply defer those calls that would go through an eight hundred number. And again, I mentioned all that and I'm wishing that it to you, they go to various, they probably go to various, uh, due process. So they would, they would call in our water department, we would patch them into this eight hundred number, or we would tell them to call back and we could have, if they want to pay on a credit card, they would call it and have, they would be notified and call the eight hundred number.
That should be on the water bill.
Yeah, and website to you.
How many of these do we have?
I don't know. Scott, and you, would you guess, uh, several hundred a month or?
It's about two hundred a month.
Two hundred a month.
What I would thought.
What I would thought, I'm just wondering if, if, not how long it takes our people, but I'm wondering if we charge them three dollars or five dollars for that same service? Maybe number one is going to be due because people might want to pay that. Number two, it's highly good a revenue.
Well, the problem, I think, is just having the staff to do it. Just, it's just, if we had a staff and they were idle, sure, it would make sense. I think the problem is that, is that, uh, just having, it just takes them away from this primary function.
Mr. Wood, just one question. Several people have, you know, I said a lot of people were complaining about the water bills, uh, and some of them, uh, indicated that they, you know, never got a bill or they, they have a bill automatically withdrawn and got a late charge. But, uh, many people didn't know that they could have the, you know, an automatic payment for the city water bill. And I'm thinking, you know, could we take it on a claim against a credit card like AT&amp;T does for mobile phones? And if we alerted the, the citizenry that they could do it that way, then, then maybe they'd be more willing to do it.
In other words, it would be the same as a draft, they charge, you pay a card.
Correct. And, uh, I don't see any reason why we shouldn't have that. People, I like to, I do it with some of mine so I get the points, so I get scottmouth and I can go to another beach.
Imagine that.
One quick comment, I, I, I just, I'm just proud of the fact that I said when you call, you get a human being, they route you to a human being. I just hate to give even one more inch to some eight hundred computer number that makes people's blood pressure go up. I just, if we can somehow keep that in, in house, I just think that, that sets us above. Call anybody else, any other cities, you're going to get a voicemail. You call people, you're going to get a human being.
You can do, you can do Ryan, or you can call, uh, when I know this Woodstock, and Woodstock does a lot of things, any of them, I wish we could do some of the things Woodstock does. But I called Woodstock, uh, one day last week in just the primary number and you get, you get a recording. And, and, and I think that's a very appropriate investment by this mayor and council to keep lives fast on our simple number. But this is for people who are right now, who respect anybody, but bogging the system down. They're taking, what they're doing is, is they're taking time away from, from the opportunity for that staff to interface comfortably with somebody who's taken the time, drew the city hall and needs of attention. They've got to answer that telephone and, and sit down and manually take down somebody's credit card number and be sure they got it right. And, um, one of the things the staff has been doing has been, when they've been getting those calls over the past several weeks, it's saved those customers. You do realize you can pay this online, don't you, if you want to pay if I did a credit card? You can already do that. But what we're trying to do is eliminate the, the amount of time the staff has had to dedicate to those calls.
Uh, one, let me say one thing there, is I, I agree with what Dale said about the eight hundred number, but what we don't want is for Peggy to answer on the other end. That would be frustrating.
Uh, in the contract, I'd say, and you're about the termination. So basically, we've got a couple of options to go try it out, see how it's working, see what the, uh, citizens are saying, they're pleased, not pleased, or anything else. We can bail out, they're saying, "Fair and easy." So that, that's part of the program, so that's very good, appreciate it.
Okay, I was looking at this, the two-year agreement line, as Mr. Verris said, that we have a termination requirement.
Is that your understanding, sir? Okay.
So, Mr. Wood, are you going to check on the credit card?
You can add it to the bill, put a statement on the bottom of the bill if you want to withdraw the credit card, just to show that your credit card equation, you know, factor payment, you know, whatever you want to do.
Um, on the mayor's report, I wanted to talk to you just, just a minute about, uh, the, uh, you know, we, we talked about the strong need for the, uh, additional one to three fire stations. And, uh, this, this city is rather large, area-wise. Uh, in fact, uh, on a straight line, you can go from almost due north to southwest just a little bit, and you're talking about over ten miles straight line. As crook lines, absolutely. We're talking about maybe five and a half miles at its widest point. That's a lot of territory for emergency services to cover. And, you know, we certainly don't have enough, we, we have two fire stations out there and it's, you know, there's a great deal of distance, uh, that they have to cover. We, we need to pursue, we need to pursue having the best emergency services and put fire police and all that we could possibly have. We don't need to just settle for the four that we got now, we need to, to look at, at going to a three. And I know that sounds a little strange, trying to work to keep your four, but we need to, we need to achieve three. We need to work at, toward that as a goal. The thing that's really kept us from doing this is what? Money, like everything else. We don't have a lot of money to, to do that with. We really don't, to do the kind of things we need to do to, to put our city in a position of being fully covered with a, with a great fire department, okay? The best in the county, as far as I'm concerned. I would like to suggest that what we do is that we do a, a comprehensive study, and I have spoken to Chief Floyd briefly about this, that we do a comprehensive study of the needs, general locations of the fire departments, whatever it would take maybe to get us, or at least to attempt to get us to the three. And that, uh, and what, that study should be done in conjunction with the county or any other surrounding fire departments with which we must interact. So that we know what they're doing, they know what we're doing with all the mutual aid agreements that, you know, we can cover this entire city in a reasonable response time. But now the fun, what I would suggest, and quite honestly, most of you know, uh, because we've kind of hammered this into everyone's brain for the last three and a half years, that we have a number of projects here, like, like the Y, like the renovation of this building, like, uh, the golf course, like reservoir Parkway, like several other things that, uh, you know, the city has, has built. All good projects, don't get me wrong, they're really good projects. But citizens had no real choice in those matters. It was just, this body here says, "Okay, you need a Y, we're going to build a Y." So we use these backdoor geo-bonds and we build a Y. You need this, you need that, you need the other, so we use these bonds and we, uh, build them. What I'm proposing is, is that we do this comprehensive study, put this plan together, have this plan together maybe by sometime shortly after the first of the year. I understand from Chief Floyd that some of the ISO requirements may be changing a little bit, and if they are, we want to know what they are so that we can work toward those. And then at the primaries in July, I would suggest that we have a bond referendum to pay for that. Give the taxpayers the option of voting for or against it. If people are willing to pay for it, we can have it. We can have it. But it's not us sitting here at this board telling everyone, every citizen out there, "This is what, we're going to spend your money on, it's what you want." And I honestly believe that most people will support something like this, knowing that, if they know it's going to improve their fire service, unlikely their insurance going down, uh, I think it would be good for the city, I believe people would support that. If they didn't support it, no worse off, we're all right now. I mean, we're right back where we are. But my belief is, is that the public, the voters would support that for the fire service here. And at least they have the choice this time. It's not that we're just going to raise your taxes to pay for something that's good for you. And that would be my, that would be my proposal that, that we consider, look at now and think about and, and, uh, you know, talk about in another work session or two and see if it could be worked out that, that this could be, we could, we could very likely, you know, build three stations at one time directly and give them where they need to be. And I think that's, uh, something we really strongly need to consider. That solves the problem of funding. We know where it's coming from and it's not just raising taxes without the citizens telling us to do so. Okay. Anybody have any comments, Jack?
I think that's an excellent idea, um, you know, I think also we should, you know, we used to do this every meeting, but, uh, praise our parliament and our, uh, people, you know, our public safety, that's the most important part of this city, the, the people who we depend on every single day. And, uh, if we're not putting them first, if we're not putting our citizens first, then I think we're falling behind. I think we might find even some ways of getting other monies to help build our stations. But you're right, we've been, you and I, I know we've been working on this two and a half years, maybe been working on it before we got here.
Absolutely. I'd like to say, this is a historic moment in the recent history of this city. This is the first time an elected official has actually suggested that we ask your permission to spend your money for something you order. And I think that is just the best idea that's come along in a very long time. We should have done it on the Y, we should have done it on the reservoir, we should have done it on buying this turkey of a building. A whole lot of other stuff.
I, I don't want to, I don't want to wear blankets around, but my, my only caveat in this is that this assumes we have the luxury of time and, and I don't think we do. Uh, if, if we get inspected and we lose, you know, it's, it's admirable to go to three and, and Mr. Verris, who we talked before the meeting about, uh, a new fire system and if the ISO results change, we might be able to do it with three stations. But what happens if we get inspected and we lose our ISO rating? Every citizen and every business is going to have an increase, substantial increase in their fire insurance. And so, uh, you know, I'm not saying raise taxes would be good, but I think they're going to pay for it one way or another. We brought this up earlier and I, I, you know, I think it'd be a good idea, I'm not sure with the debt services we have, what kind of a bond rating or, uh, bond issue we could raise, because I'm not sure, I think our bond rating is still A1 with a positive outlook or something like that, but we still have, uh, any financial.
I think, uh, I think, uh, and, uh, Chief and I spoke about it a little bit, once they do come in and, and begin to rate us, we've still got a year after that to bring up. I just sit there and can't believe that if they saw us passing a bond referendum and had a good plan, that they would downgrade us. I, they might, I mean, I just.
The only, the only thing I have is that the rate we go, uh, it will take us a year to discuss it.
Well, it'll just affect timeframe.
You know, if I, if I'm not mistaken, we had, uh, a substantial signing, five hundred thousand dollars in a splosh, uh, that was dedicated for the fire station. We had this fire station designed in two thousand and two and two thousand and three, so, you know, if we could expedite things, I'm all for it, but, you know, we're not noted for expeditious.
Well, if we get, if we get behind this, it will have to expedite it because if, if it's, if it were to, uh, election be held in the primary, I guess it's next July or first of August, I'm not sure, I think it's, I think it's July.
You have a presidential primary in March, you could.
Potentially even do it at that point, that's true.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
In council with Mr. Rush on the time frame, we had an election coming up this fall. Now, we can't put it on that.
I wouldn't, I, because I don't think we can get a good overall comprehensive plan.
I mean, I mean, just state the fact is that, as has been pointed out, we've been beating around this bush for many years. And I know Chief has some excellent, I've talked with him, and it's not like it's a whole new idea, and I think there's some good ideas floating around right now and let us look at the next two weeks, see what the thought process is. At our next meeting, we'll make a decision if we want to expedite or we want to go, I mean, because I, I think it's time to move ahead.
Okay.
And I'll be more happy to work with Mr. Rush and Chief or whatever and see what we.
Well, one of, one of the things when I talked to the chief was, is that the fact that the ISO ratings are going, are requirements are going to be changing and this will give us enough time to do a, a really good plan and when they did change, uh, around the first of the year and then did, so that we can form whatever the, uh, new regs would be and then plenty of time to sell it or do our attempt to sell it and let people, uh, decide on their own, you know? So, uh, you know, I think, I think March or July, either one, you know, is, uh, is going, is going to work. I would hate, I would hate to expedite something that evolved through, if you had a little more time, it might have went through.
Real quick, I just want to apologize in advance, all the buses stopped ending when I called the building the turkey, but.
We're sorry.
The only other, the only comment I can make, we, we're talking fire stations, but fire stations require staff. Staff is not going to be paid out of bond money. So there's, there's a realization we all have to face there. If we, we get the stations, we have to get the staff to put them in, I think. It's, it would tell me it's about four hundred thousand per station.
Can we do that correctly?
We have some trucks, we just have nobody to drive them.
I think we need to make this fire station a priority. We really need to get together and hold on this and get it going.
Okay. 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 I'll, in terms of motion, uh, the agenda reception. Very important. I understand that the, the, there is a, a.